All right. Good evening. Hope everyone has had a nice summer. Welcome to the regular school committee meeting today being August 29, 2017. Meeting is being recorded tonight by the PBD School Committee's recording secretary, Leanna Harris, and is also being broadcast live. Live, right? Live? Live. On PAT to the, again, to the millions that watch us. The matters listed below are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed on our agenda may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start off, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence, and then we're going to have the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. And now the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. We have today a full school committee membership. Our Superintendent Herb Levine, Assistant Superintendent Kara Murtag, our business manager, Jared Stanton, and our human resources director, Steve Farrell, are all here. Let's start off with the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, July 25. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve July 25, 2017 minutes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Kapener, for approval of the minutes from the regular school committee meeting of July 25, 2017. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Oh, yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Approval of bills, item number three, Mrs. Kapener.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3563, dated August 29, 2017, in the amount of $2,478,497.55, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Kapener for approval of warrant A, number 3563, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3564, dated August 29, 2017, in the amount of $476,313.82, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant B, number 3564, was made by Mrs. Kapener, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant C, number 3565, dated June 30, 2017, in the amount of $4,755.58, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard motion for approval of warrant C, number 3565, by Mrs. Kapener, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, we are, thank you. We are flying along with continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on our Higgins Project partnership with the Massey Building Authority? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had our regular August meeting on the 17th, and presently, you don't even need me to tell you, if you look out there, it's beautiful and everything's almost done. We still have a lot of things that we are tending to. One in particular is that the ground has been seeded at the field, but that due to weather and, you know, other conditions, we have to make sure that we have at least three good growing seasons under that turf before we utilize it. So they're being very careful, they're going to be seeding it again, and, in the fall, and that's going to give us an added insurance that that grass is going to be very well-established before we play on it. We're looking at the permanent signs. Some of them have gone up, most of them will be up in time for the beginning of school. There is a new traffic pattern that parents are being advised of as far as approaching the school for pickup and drop-off. Everything is open now. We have full use of both sites. We've always called it both, you know, two separate sites. They're both there. Let's see. We have punch lists. We have punch lists for this building, and we have punch lists for the field side. Those are all being tended to very specifically, they also have what they call a back punch, which is going back to make sure that the work that needed to be completed has been completed satisfactorily. So they have those two lists, and the subcommittee is going to be reviewing those at our next meeting. The, let's see, the work out front, everyone is always very concerned about the grass out front, and it's an issue that the committee addresses continuously. One of the things we have to do is see how it comes in. There is still areas that are being watched by the landscaper, and there is a plan for mowing, it's being adjusted. It's one of those things that people will have to bear with us while we work on that to make it look very, very nice for the public. But people need to know, it's not, it's not being ignored, it's just that it has, we have to work with it to make sure that it comes in the way we want it. Let's see.
Mrs. Dunn, if I, if I could, and I'll share, I'll send this along to the committee members. I've received a lot of calls and emails regarding that front area, but I will say, and I was a bit surprised by it, but they were very well-written emails expressing their concerns that we did cut it down, and that there were, there were some people who really appreciated kind of the wild look of the front. So I'll share those with the, with the committee members for the next meeting, but that, I was taken, I was surprised by that, but, because the vast majority of the comments I received were that we needed to clean that up, and, you know, I think the right action was taken.
Oh, I think so too. And it actually, it does need to be tended to because that is a drainage area, so we're very mindful of keeping it clear. One of the things that someone said was, we needed to mow it because we had to, we had to take the weeds with the flowers. Now hopefully, the wildflowers will come in heavier than the weeds, and that, that's one of the things that will make it look, it's, it's going to be a very natural area, and there will be some groomed areas, and we have got a schematic of it, and it's gone to the facilities manager for his approval, and for his staff to have input. And a special thanks to Tim Healy, and also to Brian Grant from Recreation, who has been helping us with all the questions about the fields, the soil, the, the grass seed, all of the details that go into maintaining this property. There are so many different areas of landscaping, and each one has specific needs and specific care that's recommended, so it's, it is a really big area to take care of, and a lot of people are involved in this. The next school building meeting will be on September 21st here in Higgins. It'll be Thursday, 4:00 PM. Of course, those are always open to the public, and I will say that we are beginning to wind down the project, and it's really almost complete. To, to most people right now, it is complete, we're just doing some of the things behind the scenes now to make sure it's 100 percent.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for that report. Public participation, is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open during this period portion of our agenda. Please come forward now. Okay. Our next item, superintendent's report, Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
We had been moving along quite well, hadn't we? Actually, the first two items are professional development items, and I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Murtag to speak on those. I did want to say that Kara works tirelessly during the summer to put together a professional development opportunity for our teachers, for our administrators, for our management team, for our paraprofessionals, for everybody in our district that, that receives really high-quality professional development. I want to give her an awful lot of plaudit for the work that she's done. It's also been very well-received by everybody. We've had some great PD in science with our new FOS program, we've had some terrific PD with our management team and leadership team around the area of stress, and if we expect our kids not to be stressed, and if we're trying to make sure that they're not stressed, we need to make sure adults aren't stressed either, or at least if we are, we know how to handle it. So we've started to do some professional development in that area. We had a wonderful presenter who was also working with others in our, on our faculty regarding that, and it's, it's really the whole issue of mental health that we're concentrating on with kids. We also need to not forget adults. They need to have some strategies as well, because our profession gets pretty stressful sometimes. So I'm going to have Kara just expound on that a bit, and talk about professional development over the past week.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. It has been a very successful start. The administrators are very excited about going back into their buildings and being with their teachers, and we're all eager for our students to start. As Dr. Levine said, we are working with some of our district goals, our social-emotional learning and science, and we are looking at collaborative groups in math, small group instruction in math, and we also are doing a lot of team-building activities in collaboration with our staffs. So that's where we, we are at. We're also work, working on integrated technology, which we will be introducing Mr. Haas soon, but we're touching on different things, and a very, very successful start today with everybody on board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosignol.
Through the Chair to Ms. Murtag. I know we are changing the model that, that we're teaching at the Brown School in particular as far as special ed goes, and we're moving more towards co-teaching. Have you met with that staff, and how's that training, and how's that been going?
Yes. Co-teaching is going very, very well. We have the team set up. Mrs. Grooby, the Director of Special Education, has been working diligently with the groups. We had a very, very successful training this week on Monday, and Mrs. Grooby's here, so she can elaborate on that too if she chooses to. But we also had training in June, and we will continue throughout the school year, and we will all be in, helping the teachers and the students adapt and transition, for a smooth transition into that co-teaching model.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very quickly, on that subject, we met with, with all the teachers involved that are going into that co-teaching model to ensure them that we would be doing nothing but encouraging them all year. It's a risk for them. They're doing a wonderful thing for the district as, as a pilot, and we want to make sure that they know that we are totally behind them, and we will get them all the professional development they need in order to make this a success that we think it's going to be.
Just for clarification, through the Chair, what do you mean by risk?
Well, it's a new model. So everything that you're comfortable doing, now you're going to be doing with a partner, and that's different. You know, one of the things that teachers are famous for is no other adults invade their classroom. So this is, this is different. Partnership in teaching is, is a different model of teaching. We think it's going to be better for our kids, and I, I have to thank all the teachers involved who are enthusiastic, there are, we know they're talented, but they're really enthusiastic about pooling their talents.
Not only the teachers, but also the paraprofessionals, and occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech pathologists, BCBA's, IEP team chair people, so it's, everybody is collaborating, and they were all at that training.
Me personally, through the Chair, just, just to finish up on this topic, I'm really looking forward to it, because I think, and you hit the word right on the head, collaboration. You know, that old saying, two heads are better than one. I think when you're, when you run into a challenging situation, it's easier to attack that situation collaboratively, and having a bunch of different viewpoints for the same subject matter, I think will actually enhance the child's learning, so, thank you, I'm glad it's going well.
Thank you very much. Continuing on, Mr. Mayor, just an alert that we got the-
I'm sorry, hold on one second. Mr. Hockman wanted to add it.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to hold off until we got to the goals, but since Mr. Rosignol brought this up on the co-teaching, which is, I think, the, one of the more significant changes that we're going to see throughout the district, or in the district for the school, the 2017-18 school year, and that we're going to talk very shortly about district goals that have been developed, and, and I think both of those are great things. The district goals that were developed seem to be very exciting, and I'm a big fan of co-teaching. I think there's a lot of data out there that supports co-teaching from students. My question is, and to kind of piggyback on Mr. Rosignol, is, do we have any assessments in place so that we can evaluate the, or measure the, hopefully, the heightened success of students and achievement and things like that as a result of the co-teaching?
Through the Chair, if I could invite Ms. Grooby up to talk about that, that would be her expertise area.
Welcome, Mrs. Grooby. If you could just introduce yourself.
My name is Ruth Grooby. So there's a baseline of last year's, we're looking at last year's test results, last year's, is that me?
Take it off your book.
Mr. Miko, I think it's your electricity, your personal electricity.
Look at the lights glow. So we're looking at those test results, plus we have surveys ready to go out for kids, for families, and for staff. We're looking at it quarterly. The staff was really excited in training in June, and then again, in the summertime, they connected, they talked, we did a lot of, it's about a marriage, it's about, you know, two people truly working with each other through the good and the bad, because there's going to be bumps in the road, it's not Nirvana, and that's how, you know, it's presented, and look at all the research, as you said. So we do have assessments in place, they're ready to go, and we're looking at both the communication, the two-way communication, because it's a program, and we want it to be consistent, K to five. We don't, we want a child to move up from K to one, one to two, especially in the autism spectrum, the transitions are really difficult for them, so we want it to look similarly for the six years that they're in this program. So I think it's, I think it's pretty well planned out.
Yes, you have-
Thank you. Through you to Ms. Grooby, thank you. I mean, I, I suspected that there was some process in place that was going to evaluate this, and I think it's important, since this is such a significant change for students and parents and families that are involved, to keep that information flowing.
Yes.
The results that we, that we developed.
You're going to have to go in the next room, Joe.
And the results, good or bad?
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, there, there are going to be some bumps in the road, as you have already recognized, and, and we need to learn from that and build off of that, so, thank you, thank you for doing such a great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to compliment you, Dr. Levine, and Ms. Murtag. Looking through the, the district goals, in that, that first big goal, your method of assessment, I think that's wonderful, that you're going to do a climate survey at the beginning of the year, and another one at the end of the year. That, I'm really very happy to see that, and looking through all the rest of the goals and assessments and everything, it looks like a very well-thought-out plan, and I'm, I'm thrilled to see that you're proposing that we have a new social studies program to look at that in FY '19. Thank you very much, that's really good.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Dr. Levine?
Thank you. Just an alert that we were successful, Far Kids Only was successful in receiving an extension. We now have the community grant awarded by the state, the 21st Century Community Grant at both the Welch for the next three years and the Center. I think that's an exciting opportunity for our kids. It will service about 40 more kids than, than would otherwise have been serviced, and we're very excited about that. So congratulations to everybody involved. Burke School textbooks, I'm going to ask you to declare the following surplus. I do have it written down for you if, if you want it, but I'll just read it out.
Motion to receive.
Second. The, the Burke School, the principal has requested that 226 Scott Forsman Science texts, copyright 2000, to be declared surplus, and they could be given, they're in condition well enough to be given out to students at the beginning of the year. The 26 World Language texts, copyright 1990, they cannot be given out due to their condition, and six McGraw-Hill Math Books, copyright 2002, and they also cannot be given out due to the condition. I would ask for a motion to declare them surplus, please.
I'd like to make a motion, follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Dr. Levine, Mrs. Dunn?
And I'm pleased to see that the condition of those science texts would allow them to be given out to students, so I would, I don't think we need a motion, I'd just like to encourage the staff to give those to students, no matter which school, to make sure people use them.
Thank you. I would turn this over now to our finance director, our business manager, Jared. Okay. And that would be the report by accountable unit for the budget that you have in your packet. Any questions for Jared he can answer? Hopefully.
Yes. So basically, what that is, it's just an update, I believe, as of August 21st, we have not had our teachers' payroll yet. A lot of the expenditures are still in encumbrances, so we've actually spent a little bit more, but it hasn't been approved yet for this warrant, so.
Any questions on the accountable unit report? Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just quickly, through you to Mr. Stanton, to the extent that there's any surplus, we'd be using it to prepay for special, special education or other statutorily permitted expenses.
Yeah, I, so I'm still closing out FY '17. I don't anticipate there to be any major surplus, but if so, we'll use it towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The hiring status report that you have in your packet, Mr. Farrell is here to answer any questions that you might have. I would like to give you a quick update. We are very, very close to full employment, particularly with teachers and professional staff. We do have some, we, we've been very, very successful in recruiting and, and being able to hire an ELL teacher, which was very hard for us last year. We were actually out of compliance for a while with the numbers, and as much as we tried, and the union did understand that, that we were trying, we tried everywhere, there, there just wasn't a qualified ELL teacher available. We feel that we have been able to hire a very highly qualified, good ELL teacher for the high school this year. We're very pleased with that, and we'll be back in compliance this year. So I just wanted to make sure that I highlighted that for you. I also wanted to highlight that we do have a few paraprofessional positions open, we have gone through the recall list, we have a number of paraprofessional positions, and I would say to the community out there that if you're interested in working with us, please get in touch with Mr. Farrell, and Mr. Farrell, as HR Director, will help you fill out an application. As I said, we do have some positions open. And with that, I would turn it over to the school committee for questions to Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Mr. Hockman?
Actually, with, with Dr. Levine's permission, I'd like to ask him a question. With regard, you, you jogged my memory on the ELL, subject of ELL. I think I read somewhere recently that the Senate, State Senate passed some legislation regarding ELL teachers and with some additional grant funding, and I, I don't know if it's gotten to the House, or if the governor's even looked at it, and I don't know, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you're not familiar with it, maybe I can pull up the article that I read, and you and I can talk at some point.
Sure, just if you can send it to me, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm not aware of that.
Okay. I think it was pretty recent.
Um, sorry. If there are no questions on, on personnel, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Dunn?
I, I just want to inform the committee and the public that my daughter will be employed by the school district this year, and I'm very proud of her hard work, and I am very, very pleased to see that she'll be joining us.
Not only as a school adjustment counselor, but with an art talent, which will help, art therapy, which will help our kids tremendously that she's going to be working with. I do have a, an ethical responsibility here to read this, and I intend to do so, and then I'm going to turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor. We were able to advertise for and have a candidate pool for a school adjustment counselor, and the person who bubbled up to the top of that group is the son of a Director of Special Education. I am reading this for you. This is called a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form, as demanded by the state. I have talked with the State Ethics Commission to see what my responsibility is, and this is my responsibility. Both Mrs. Grooby and myself have filled out these forms and certified that we had nothing to do with the hiring of her son. Mrs. Grooby stayed completely out of the hiring process. This was done by the principal, and the principal made the recommendation to myself, and this was a, a young man that I had never met up to this point. So we are confident that Mr. Grooby is recommended by the principal, is the qualified candidate for this position. This was done ethically, it was done through committee, and recommended by the principal, and I am going to give you this form signed by me that certifies that, for you to keep on file.
Motion to receive.
Heard the motion received by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. All in favor? Mr. Rosignol?
And who will be his direct supervisor?
We have arranged for Mrs. Grooby to not be his supervisor in any way, shape, or form. Kirsten Bellino will be his direct supervisor. You're welcome. And of course, the principal, not kidding. Thank you. I, I would like, if I could, Assistant Superintendent Murtag, to give a quick update on the PBTL Summer Program, which was really extraordinary.
Before we change subjects, I just have just a couple other questions on this.
Mr. Rosignol, you have the floor.
When you don't have an FTE by the position, is that because it's unfilled? So for instance, the PE teacher, point six, you write for a new position, but you don't have an FTE or a dollar mark, that position is currently unfilled.
We look down the middle column, filled by if there's an empty row or cell. Those are the empty positions. Unfortunately, I've not filled in the FTE cells of the thing, but that particular column is what you should be looking as far as empty slots.
If I could just interrupt for a minute, the point six is the FTE. Point six is, point six of a 1.0.
Right, that, that was a bad example, but there are other-
Okay.
There are, yeah. There are other vacant positions that don't have an FTE.
Got it.
Yeah, I've been trying to sharpen this up as much as possible, and I did put it on double copy.
Yep.
You also notice that the salaries for the carers I did not carry over.
Contractually, they're basically going to be the same. Okay. And then just lastly, I, I just want to applaud both you, Dr. Levine, and Ms. Murtag. There are very few vacancies. I mean, we have a page that's one, two, three, four, five, five pages deep of either transfers, new hires, or changes, and there's very few vacancies on the five pages we have in front of us. So I just want to applaud you for your diligence in finding the best candidates available and replacements for all of these positions. I know we've had a number of changes in the district, whether it's going to a new teaching model, whether it's changing our guidance system, so I, I just want to, now that I understand the way that it's formatted, I just want to just give kudos to, to all of the leadership team in filling the positions that we needed, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol.
I'd like to also thank Barbara McCarthy in my office, all the principals, the unions, it's been a major collaboration, so thank you, we do appreciate it.
And just lastly, on that point six PE teacher, where is that going to be located?
Uh, that, go ahead, please. Uh, multi, multiple schools, the Mall School, the Carroll School, and one more.
Who's for it?
Burke, Burke School. Burke, Burke School.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Murtagh, a quick summary of how well the PBTO went, this tutoring program went this summer?
Yes, it was an honor and privilege to work with Nick Blaisdell. His team of 65 volunteer tutors were kind and compassionate to our K-12 students. They had 270-plus students attend their tutoring program, and they did an outstanding job. Every single day, the parents came in, picked up, complimented the work that our student volunteer tutors did. So kudos to that entire team of students and tutors. It was very successful.
Thank you. Just to add to that, anybody that thinks we've lost our way as a country should come and see that program in operation. Lastly, for me, I would like to introduce three new hires and welcome them to the district and offer them any opportunity except at Mr. Amico's microphone to say a few words. First, I'd like to introduce Bob Quist. Mr. Quist was the longtime guidance person at Malden Catholic. I had the privilege of hiring him at Salem when I was the superintendent in Salem as my director of guidance. He has been there since 2000 and something, 2002 or '03, and I had the opportunity to hire him back here, and he will be, he is our new director of guidance K through 12. He has already begun with, on a very positive note with his people. He met with all of his people today. They came out smiling, so I'm not sure what happened in that meeting, but Bob, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. First of all, I want to thank everybody here. I think it's an honor and a privilege to be here in Peabody, working and developing a K-12 comprehensive program. I'll say a few words, but I'm very passionate about what I talk about, so if Dr. Levine throws something at me to kind of get me to stop, I don't want you to be here all night, but I literally could go all night. We initially, I met with the entire guidance staff this morning and throughout the course of the day, and I actually want to thank Ms. Murtagh for allowing me to have them today and tomorrow, because we're beginning a process that I'm hoping that I can be able to report back to Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtagh, to the school committee, where we are in a very relatively short period of time, but in the, after the first of the year and going forward, where we're going to be with our guidance program. One of the first steps, obviously, will be to do an audit, and I kind of began that conversation with the school counselors today about what are the needs that we have so that we can ensure that all our students and families have access to quality guidance services. There are, as some of you may or may not know, the Department of Ed endorsed what was called the Mass Model 2.0 this past April, which is a development of a comprehensive guidance program, K-12, and it's been being endorsed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and they're actually looking at some of that as part of their contractually asking districts to look at as far as evaluative processes for school counselors going in the relatively near future. A lot of it is based, we want to make good decisions around using data that's available in Peabody to make sure that we're providing, again, the quality services from the elementary school to the middle school to the high school. I think a lot of time, the soundbite is what's happening at the high school, where is, what are students doing around college and career readiness, but it doesn't really begin at the high school. It really begins in the younger grades and working through, and that, my goal is that regardless of what elementary school a student and family is at, regardless down the road, if there are changes in school counseling staff or principals change, whatever happens through life, where people move on, that a foundation is there, that those same services are being provided and quality services to all our families. And there's also, I realize, there's uniqueness among all the elementary schools, and we want to cherish that uniqueness, but also look at the common ground to make sure that, again, that we're providing services. What I'm hoping to be able to do with the permission of the principals is to be able to meet with the elementary schools' PTOs, to kind of talk to them and solicit their input, because it's one thing to develop a program, but, and say this is what it's going to be, but I know I don't have all the answers, but I know collectively, the staff at the elementary schools, middle school, or high school, their parents, their administrators, know what's worked for them and where their areas are concerned. So I really want to spend the time being able to meet with them, go out wherever I can to talk about this, because I think it's important that families have a voice and that the schools have a voice, and that we develop a program that works best for all of the Peabody students. And I'll stop at that point, I think.
Thank you. Yep. I would have stopped you about 10 minutes ago, but, no, that was a nice thoughtful presentation, Bob. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before you go, Bob.
Sure. Welcome.
Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you. Through the chair. First, welcome.
Thank you.
That speech was a breath of fresh air in my mind. I'll just speak for myself. I know we took a lot of heat for changing our guidance department and the structure that we had last budget session, but you hit on topics that were absolutely key to our decision in my mind, and changing to a structure that looks at a student from K to 12 and promoting their, their goals, whether it is college or the workforce, and learning what the student's best assets are, and really promoting and growing them at a young age. So I just want to, A, welcome you, and B, just thank you for being here and providing a breath of fresh air in the guidance department that I think it needed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Mrs. Cappener?
Thank you, through the chair. Welcome, Mr. Quist.
Yes.
Said it correctly. I want to reiterate what Mr. Rozignol has said. Many of the things that you touched upon it is exactly what we were looking for, bringing everything together all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade. So I'm very encouraged by the things that you've said. I have a couple of questions. One is, and I think we already touched upon this, but I just want to double check. Is your office in the high school?
I'm located in the high school, and I have a small caseload.
That was my second question.
Which is, which I have to, if I may, I think that was an incredible, great decision, because a lot of times, working with families, you have to, you get even more of a pulse of what's happening. And I've been a school counselor for, this is my 31st year. I've been a director for the past 16, and I always consider myself a school counselor, and the best part, and what really generates all my enthusiasm, is working with families.
That's great. That was my next question. Some parents today did receive an email from Mr. Beganza explaining how Miss English's students were going to be separated and where they were going to be going, so I had a little concern about that, but it seems like you're on top of it. Thank you, welcome.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cappener. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Welcome, Mr. Quist. I was really encouraged when I heard you talk about how you wanted to meet with the PTOs at each of the schools to get the word out to the parents, and we have a subcommittee on the school committee. It's called the Parent Advisory Board. It has representatives from every school, and my first thought was, we've got to invite you to come speak at that.
I'd love to be invited.
It would be really nice for you to come. So I'm pleased. You know exactly, you know, who to touch base with, and that was really, really good. So go to the PTOs, and we're going to have you in another meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quist.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's now my pleasure to introduce the new principal of the Welch School, and I would ask Michelle Masa to come and join us.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me tonight. I am really, really excited to be part of the Peabody family, and I say that with 100% honesty. I can't tell you how fantastically welcomed I felt since my date of hire. The amount of people that actually came down to the building, from members of this board, members of the councilmen, it was wonderful to be able to meet the community as one of the first people that welcomed me as part of the new principal at the Welch School. This is my 19th year in education, but I have to say that my lens has completely shifted about four years ago when I became a parent myself. It made me realize how important Family First is, and making sure that we're honoring all of our families, our children, our teachers, and the extended families that they all come from. It makes me very, very happy to know that I put out an email very quickly to my staff that said, hey, I'm going to have coffee and donuts in the teachers' room if you want to meet. I know that you don't have to, but I'd love to meet everybody, and I can honestly say that about 90% of the staff were able to attend. It was wonderful to get to know everybody, and I really, really look forward to continuing that. I was able to meet with my PTO just recently, and we have some really, really fantastic things that are going to happen at the Welch School. So, and I welcome you all to come down and visit.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And lastly, someone with whom you are familiar, our digital learning coach here at the Higgins, who has been a tremendous positive force for change in the way that we do technology for the last few years here. He has been a leader in the charge for teachers to embrace technology and has done so in a way that has built partnerships and trusting relationships as opposed to scaring people, because there are people that are still afraid of technology. So knowing his talents, our new position, Director of Teaching, Learning, and Integrated Technology, has been filled by Jared Haas, and I'd like to give him an opportunity to say a few words. Jared, welcome.
Well, I just wanted to say, this is my 12th year now in Peabody. I'm so excited to be in Peabody. I live in Peabody now. It's, everything has come really full circle. You know, I've been a jack of all trades. I've worked with some of your kids with theater, social studies teachers, working with technology, and now as an administrator for, for teaching and learning. And I really like that title, the way that it was framed by Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh, that now we can start to focus on teaching pedagogy, not just focusing on technology alone, but really focusing on what's going to work best in the classroom. And today, I talk to the high school teachers, and I talk to them about how technology's a tool. It's not always going to be the right tool. We need to focus on what's best for kids. So part of my job is going to be to start evaluating and observing, not evaluating teachers, but evaluating what's going on in the district and seeing how I can bring some of my practices that I've used in the middle school across the whole district, and helping teachers whenever I can, in addition to whatever other tasks Ms. Murtagh and Dr. Levine have me set out for, for supporting learning in the district. So welcome any questions, but very, very excited for this position. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Haas. It's great to have you. Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome. Welcome to your new role, I should say. How was your response with the high school teachers that you met with today?
Extremely supportive. I went into a school that is looking for all different avenues of additional support, that wants to improve any way they can. I saw a room of teachers who were actively pursuing building up their Google Classroom sites today, working collaboratively, asking great questions, seeking out the best practices, and we're only going to enhance that. So, very welcoming.
Through the chair. Do you find us using the same platform district-wide, building to building? I know at the high school, over the last few years, as technology has improved, different teachers use their own formats for what they're comfortable with. Are you going to be able to, or at least try to, establish the same platform at the high school?
Well, I mean, currently, teachers are, the suggestion is to use Google Classroom as the main tool for communication, assignments, and collection. Today, we gave teachers an opportunity to develop their Google Classrooms for the year, and that really is a push as K through 12 teachers now have access to Google, and they have been using Google accounts with students thus far. So...
Excellent. Like I said, welcome to your new role. Thank you very much. I think what you do with technology and with our students is fantastic. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas is everywhere. I see him at the Berksby Farm. I see him at Shaw's Supermarket. I see him everywhere, and it's always fun to see you. You're doing a great job for the district, and I was happy to talk to you a little bit socially and learn that you are living in Peabody. It's, you're an asset to the community, so thank you. I would like to, I don't know if I'm drag, through the chair. I don't know if I'm bringing you back to your former role, or if this is still within your purview in your new role, but can you, if you can, give us a little update on the rollout of Chromebooks? I think there was an expansion this year, and I don't know if that, again, is, if it's not your function or role, then maybe Dr. Levine or Mr. Stanton or someone?
So yeah, I can touch on my experience. So in my role, I'm still going to be very active with the middle school and the high school in that, the Chromebook rollout, the maintenance of the program, working with Chris Mitchell in the IT department.
Right.
But I was, I was part of the rollout, both at the sixth grade for the middle school and for the ninth grade, and we successfully implement, we successfully handed out new Chromebooks to students. Seventh and eighth grade students and 10th grade students are still using the same Chromebooks as last year. So now we are six through 10 with Chromebook one-to-one. Very successfully, a lot of parents asked great questions. We were able to support parents to sign up. We were able to have all of our forms translated in Portuguese and Spanish, so that we would have access for students to be able to fill out forms with their parents. Going very well.
And if my memory is right, it usually isn't, are we rolling this down to fifth graders at some point in the, in the future?
So currently, the second, third, this year, second and third grade, the fourth and fifth grade last year, were given four Chromebooks in each classroom for teachers, and the teachers were given laptops and projection cards. So the model for the K through five is going to be having a station-based model, and then the sixth through 12 is going to go one-to-one within the next two years.
And that expanded the second and third grade classrooms for this upcoming year?
For this year, and the next year it'll be K-1.
Thank you. Just in overview, and I wanted to thank everybody in the room. This is my eighth year on the school board, and I can't remember a more exciting eve of school opening meeting than we've had tonight. We work on budgets for long hours, and we make some difficult decisions, and sometimes we're met with criticism, and sometimes we're not. But I can't recall a meeting where we've seen the results of some of those decisions all at one time, and the excitement, talking about co-teaching with special education, talking about new principles, change in guidance directives and the way we're going to do business in that department, change in how we just, instead of just looking at technology for the sake of looking at technology, but really driving it down to instruction and learning. Kudos to everyone who put this together. Kudos to the administration, the leadership team, and to boot, I heard Jared Stanton say we might even have a small surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mrs. Cappener?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Haas, I just wanted to say welcome again, and reiterate some of the things that Mr. Rozignol had said. You've been here for 12 years. You've had so many different roles, and I'm just so pleased that you have this new position, because your many roles are a huge benefit. The history that you have here with us, I've seen you in many of those different roles, and you are going right along with our growth. You know where we were, you know where we need to be, and that is a huge benefit for our district. You know, I think Dr. Levine had mentioned something about technology is scary, integrating technology into the classroom, you know, it can be very scary. And I'll tell you, I just took a class at Endocline called Integrating Technology in a Classroom, and it was really, really scary. And you don't know how many times, if it wasn't so unethical, I wanted to call you and ask you to help me with my homework. But I didn't. I want everyone to know. I don't have to fill out the form. I didn't do it. So I appreciate it, and I couldn't think of anyone that would be better for this position. So welcome again.
Mr. Libio?
I just have one quick question. Is the school's website, is that being redesigned, or what's the status of that?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I asked the techie boys to redesign our website about six months ago, and it's taken this long to get to this point where we're almost ready to roll it out. You will see a newly designed, I think, more easily navigated website very shortly. That will include some sort of syncing of the Google Calendar to what you're used to. We haven't quite got that down yet, but Chris Mitchell is working on that. We're, I'm, I'm very excited about the work that they've done. We've met four or five times on this now. Each time, they have brought new stuff to us. We're just really looking for the pictures that are going to go on the front page and some final decisions on, on content, and then we're going to be ready to roll it out, and I'll let you know exactly when that's you know exactly when that's gonna happen.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question, Mrs. Koppenner?
I just have something.
Yeah, quick question, Mrs. Koppenner?
Just in regards to the website, are we still gonna have, like, logins, parent portal, grades, all of those type of things?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, everything else still?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
We wanna see your grades from the class that you took. I'd like to see your grades.
Wait, wait. I will probably tell you I received an A in that class. You don't call Mr. Haas at all.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mrs. Koppenner. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Haas, I am really thrilled to know that you are in the new position. Being able to continue with the momentum that you've had here at Higgins and the impact you have with the students, to bring that and bridge that up to the high school was very, it was very important for this board to have that happen, and finding out that it's you, it makes so much sense to have you in that position, and I'm really, really happy about it. And I'm very, very pleased that you're, you are excited about the position too. So, good luck to you. I think that parents and people who have been concerned about the transition of the technology here for their students and then up to the high school, I don't think that they have to worry enough, and I'm really encouraged by this. And to ball up on something that Mr. Hockman said, I agree with you. This is really great to be able to see things happen so quickly. When we make a decision, usually, oh my God, it takes years. This has been phenomenal. So, I think it was a really good point to make. So, welcome again, Mr. Haas.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of last items, if I may.
Mr. Rosignol?
Please, just to go back for two seconds, through the chair, to Dr. Levine. One of, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the reasons why you changed the format was to basically sync our calendar district-wide, correct?
That and a number of other things.
Correct. Well, and the only reason why I bring that up as a point of emphasis is, going along with Mr. Hockman and Ms. Dunn just said, one of the feedbacks I've gotten, and I'm sure a number of other board members have gotten, is when there's a conflict on the schedule. So, again, to just emphasize, you know, we try to push that rock up the hill, this is another instance where, you know, we made a request to make sure that our calendar was going to sync, so that we didn't have conflicts district-wide, and it's just another step forward in accomplishing those goals. So, I just wanna make that a point of emphasis and say, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Just, I know that we're gonna get to written communication with Police Chief Griffin. I think it's important to, for you to know that every year now, we have a summer day camp that is run by regional group of police officers and police chiefs, and they center themselves, they were at the high school, they used the Higgins this year, and they loved it, as well they should. And there are literally a few hundred kids from around the region that participate in leadership training and other training, given by these wonderful police officers who volunteer their time. It's terrific stuff. I was able to attend both graduation ceremonies on consecutive Fridays, and I just wanted to applaud our own chief, who was so highly thought of by colleagues in his own community, and of course, the folks in Peabody. He's done such a wonderful job for us. He's extremely responsive for the schools, for the public schools, and the, everybody that participated in this leadership camp, including the kids, they were just outstanding. What a great group of kids, and it just makes you feel good that you know that there are generations of kids coming up, they're gonna lead us in the right direction in this country, and it starts in public school, because public school is the great equalizer. Public school is the great opportunity in America, and there were fifty million kids that go to public schools every day, and with a bedrock of a representative democracy, because without an educated citizenry, democracy can't flourish. And to have the opportunity to see these kids flourish in such a short period of time with a wonderful group of police officers and police chiefs is heartening. And we're proud to host it every year, and we will continue to host it every year, and I just wanted to thank Police Chief Griffin and all of the people that made this work so well, including the kids. With that, I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That was excellent. Very well said. Mr. Rosignol?
Yeah, through the chair. Dr. Levine, when was that camp?
That was on two consecutive weeks in July. I think it was the last two weeks in July.
And that was, I'm sorry, through the chair, and that was only in this building?
Yes. It's usually at the high school.
Yeah, we've had it for years now at the high school, and this year, we moved it over to the Higgins Middle School because of all the work that was taking place at the high school.
Thank you.
Mrs. Koppenner?
Through the chair. Dr. Levine, is this the camp that is for the fifth graders that are going into middle school only, just fifth grade?
Fourth graders.
Oh, it's for fourth graders going into fifth grade?
Fifth grade.
Didn't they previously hold this in Salem as well?
I believe that Salem has hosted this, yes.
It was, it was previously hosted in Salem, and then they came over to the best city, Peabody, to run the program. A better city.
Of course they did. I'll tell you, it is a wonderful, wonderful program. It's not very easy to get into. You have to get right on the ball. Once it comes out, you know, it usually goes home in the backpacks. Is it something that rotates, or will we be having it?
We, I would like to say publicly that I would like to host it every year, and if Chief Griffin can make that happen, that would be terrific.
This is wonderful, a wonderful camp. Yes, I agree. Thank you.
With that, I'm done.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Levine, for that report. And, great, so we do have one written communication, and Dr. Levine touched on it very eloquently. We have a letter from Police Chief Thomas Griffin thanking the city of Peabody for a very successful summer day camp program. And I do believe, just to answer the question, Mrs. Koppenner, to add that we are looking to continue to host that camp, and I wanted to thank also, not only Police Chief Griffin, but District Attorney John Blodgett, who was involved in this as well, does a great job. Subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman, anything to report at this time?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Mrs. Koppenner?
Nothing to report.
School safety?
Nothing.
Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosignol?
Nothing at this time, but I will be setting up a meeting with our new athletic director, Mr. Buer, just to go over his goals and game plan for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
Point intended.
Game plan.
Absolutely.
Okay. Qualifying standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time, but we will be scheduling a meeting. We have a ton of policies to review.
That sounds like a meeting to be at.
I'm so excited. Hey, I'm getting excited about the grass growing over the field, so this is good.
Liaison to City Council on Advisory Board, Mrs. Dunn?
We will be having our very first parent advisory board meeting on the last Monday of the month, and as soon as the school starts...
I can't think of that one.
Maybe 'cause I'm up next.
That's right.
I was gonna say, oh, okay, we are going to have the meeting as soon as I get the list of parent advisory board members, the notice will go out, and we'll, usually, we will meet that last Monday, but I always like to check with all the members, to make sure that works with their PTO meetings, et cetera.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and grounds, Mr. Miko?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through the chair of the committee. We've seen tonight that there's been a theme of investment made by many of us, by Superintendent Levine, by Assistant Superintendent Murtagh, and obviously, by the mayor. I'd like to thank all of you, like to thank Mr. Healy and many, many others, because there have been some great upgrades in our buildings and grounds over this year, and I'll talk a little bit about them, and then I'll allow the mayor to speak on them as well. Including, in the upgrades, the high school, you guys have probably heard it, new parking lot paving, the auditorium has been renovated, we've had a roof replacement, gymnasium, we've had a new basketball court and some lighting, and hopefully, in the future, we may add a softball field as well.
And tennis courts are set to be completed in the next week or two, new tennis courts.
Awesome. Here at the Higgins, as Ms. Dunn has mentioned, the beautiful grounds have really taken shape. And again, this is an investment for our students, for our children, for our teachers. Center School, Center School family will really be happy to hear that the paving project is, will be underway, and along with that, they'll get some new basketball hoops that actually face each other, and they can play a full-court basketball game versus going off to the side, so I know a lot of the kids will be happy about that. The move to central office has been a great move, and I wanna thank Dr. Levine and your whole staff, because I know moves aren't easy and change isn't easy, and I just wanna thank you for taking the leadership, and Ms. Murtagh as well for doing that. Thank you on that. Also, over at the West School, we're doing some renovations for the Special Ed Center downstairs in the basement, and I think that's it from here, but I wanted to give the mayor an opportunity to speak on these, because without his leadership, a lot of these items would not take shape. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort, and, you know, certainly, we work very hard in trying to support our administrators and making sure that the work, quality work is done in the classroom, hiring excellent people. But a part of that, at least from my perspective, what I always try to work on, is to make sure that where our students perform, the buildings they attend, where our students play, you know, to try to raise the standards of those. Every year, we try to work on some different projects, and certainly, we've been able to do those, and thank you for outlining them, Mr. Miko. A couple of things that we're looking at now, I just wanted to mention, is continuing work here at the Higgins Middle School with the new fields. We're kind of wrapping up the completion of the work to our fields, as Mrs. Dunn outlined earlier, but one thing we are looking to, we're getting quotes on now, to add to the work that was done here, is a concession stand and a...
Restrooms.
Concession stand and, what was it?
Restrooms.
Restrooms. Concession stand and restrooms, right near where the storage shed is now. We have the infrastructure in place, there'll be a little bit of work done as well. And then, at the Peabody High School fields, we're going to be getting some quotes and looking at, as you mentioned, Mr. Miko, something I think has bothered all of us, is that we do not have a softball field on-site. It bothers me that our varsity girls sports team has to have to go offsite. I believe they're the only sports team that has to do that, besides our golf team and our swim team. And we're gonna look to try to bring a softball field to the upper field at the high school, looking at prices for turf, for both the baseball, the softball, and the multi-sport field up there. So, that's something we're gonna continue to remain, we'll continue to remain in committee, and we'll have further discussion about that once we start getting some prices for that. And then, one thing I did wanna mention, this is separate from some of the work we're doing to our fields, but is the, I think, a continuation and add-on to that, is we have a beautiful auditorium here at the Higgins Middle School. And if you do recall, that was not something that was funded by MSBA. They said that was not educationally based, and they refused to reimburse us the fifty-six point one-four percent that we did get for the school. We, as a committee, as a city, decided that we wanted to invest in our performing arts and have a top-notch auditorium here in the city of Peabody. We've completed one year, and everything has gone tremendous, tremendously well. Our students are performing on a stage and in an auditorium that they deserve. And to do one thing that we've talked about, Dr. Levine and I and Assistant Superintendent Murtagh, was just about having an event at the Higgins Middle School in the auditorium to really showcase the auditorium for those that don't get to see it. The PMLP Municipal Light Plant, they run a summer concert, excuse me, a... Okay? In the spring, it's a free concert for seniors, and they have, they provide some food, and it's just a wonderful event. Many of us are there every year, and they have it in May. This year, what I'd like to do is have an event here at the Higgins Middle School, again, for our seniors, and to kind of have a day or morning where they can come, visit the school, see where their tax dollars went, see the investment that was made in education. I get asked on a, on a regular basis by the seniors that they would love to see the school. We did have a day last year when we invited, it was a day, an open, open house for everybody to come. We had a large crowd, but I know there were a number of people that weren't able to come that day. So, we are going to have on October twenty-first, a free concert for seniors here in the city of Peabody, and we'll be getting out information on that, whether it be an opportunity to also to come around and visit the school and tour the school. The performance will be, will be made by Mr. Simmons at the high school and his corral and his performing arts, the band, and, you know, he's working on the, what the performance will be. But it'll be a great day, and that'll be October twenty-first, free concert here for seniors, and that'll be a Saturday morning. So, I did wanna mention that. A lot of exciting things happening. I think there's even more exciting things on the way, and we're gonna continue to work in committee on some of these projects, and hopefully, every summer, add a little bit to our schools and to our playgrounds and to our theaters, to our science labs, and again, continue to try to work to make sure that our students and our faculty and all of our administrators have the type of facilities that they deserve and merit. Mr. Miko, anything more to report?
Just maybe on the, on that event there, if we could possibly have some transportation from the senior center. If anyone needs some transportation to get over here, that'd be great.
Yeah, great idea. Absolutely. Excellent. Oh, Mrs. Dunn?
I'm sorry, it's, it's a bit pertinent on building and grounds. There is an item that I, that I didn't go into detail on the Higgins presentation about our monthly meeting. One of the things that have come up, and it is a side issue, but I can't, I have to tell you about it tonight, we're going to be having a meeting to discuss a new sound system for this room. And we're in the process of putting that meeting together with PAT and some engineers and the people who would be involved in it. It was peripheral to a usual Higgins meeting, and I didn't bring it up earlier, because that was before the microphones proved why we need to have that meeting. So, I just wanted to let you know.
Good, and thank, because I get an email regularly from Mrs. Cronin, who lives in Peabody, who watches us regularly, and she wants to make sure the microphones are working properly. So, we may have to invite her that day when we get...
I think we could do that. Mrs. Cronin's lovely. We should invite her to that meeting.
Excellent. And by the way, the Peabody, City Hall, we've just installed our new sound system at the City Hall Wigan Auditorium, which is spectacular. It's a major difference now in the sound system, and the hope is gonna be that we're gonna have some performances and concerts next year, but we needed to invest in the sound system, and it's truly spectacular, and we got a couple of other things we have to do before the end of the year. So, sound systems, absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Olympia?
Yeah, real quick, any updates on Kylie, on the status of Kylie?
No, but I think we will be able to have a report for the next meeting.
Okay. Great. One thing that I forgot to bring up, I'll be meeting with the performing arts faculty, K through twelve tomorrow, and I will be asking them to take on a project that I think will be a fun project for the city, and that is a citywide art program for murals in every school, student-driven. I'm gonna be asking the art faculty in every building to take on, making certain that we have at least one mural in every building that a student is chosen, or a group of students are chosen, to draw on our, somewhere in our building in conjunction with the building principals. I'm also going to ask the art department at the high school to take that project on in our new building across the street from City Hall at Twenty-seven Lowell, and at least do one, if not two, murals for our building as well. I would like a Peabody theme. And by the way, I don't know who did that mailbox out in front of Peabody, Peabody High School on Lowell Street, but what a spectacular job that is of George Peabody. So, I think that we're going to begin that project and have that as a project for this year, and I think it'll be exciting. And when we're done, I will ask you, as a school committee, to view all of the projects in all of the schools, either as at your leisure or as a group. I think it's gonna be a really good project.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the report, Mr. Miko. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
I haven't formally scheduled a meeting yet, but I'm looking at maybe like the third Wednesday of every month, kind of an off, off-week type of thing, but I'll kind of reach out to some other people, make sure that's gonna be okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. New business, any new business, Mr. Olympia?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up something... Yeah, I'd just like to bring up something, you know, with back-to-school, parents are back-to-school shopping and things of that nature, but what would a family, what would be the best approach, maybe this is for Dr. Levine, if a family wanted to donate, you know, new or lightly-worn clothing, and I'm thinking more towards like the elementary schools, fam, would they reach out to the principals, or what would be the best approach to that?
Through the chair, reaching out to the principals.
Okay.
Principals, every principal in every elementary school conducts clothing drives, particularly as winter sets in, so each principal would have their own methodology of acceptance and know what families are in need.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. All new, any new items or items for the next agenda, handle the regular course of business, before we adjourn, Mr. Hockman?
Just on Mr. Olympia's point, and it's a, it's a terrific point, and while we're talking about it, I just want to encourage those that are in need to talk to the building principals, there's usually a helping hands committee or something else, and it's all confidential. There, there's no disclosure of names, names of students or names of families, it's, it's a great, you know, Dr. Levine talked about the, a lot of the good that still remains in our society, and this is one of those great programs that flourishes throughout our elementary schools, so if there are people in need, please don't feel embarrassed, we all have difficult times during the course of our lives, and talk to the building principal to make sure that kids are dressed warmly, dressed appropriately, so that they don't get sick and they're able to continue to go to school and not worry about those things. Great point, Mr. Olympia.
Great, thank you for a terrific meeting, before we wrap up, Mr. Miko?
I think I'd just like to welcome the new students that come to school, welcome the parents, and lots and lots of the students and the teachers and administration, have a great year. Thank you.
Great, thank you, everyone, thank you for a great meeting.
Second.